Good evening, good bye, the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Elder, Mr. Houser.
Here.
Mr. Lazer.
Here.
Mrs. May.
Here.
Mrs. Tazar.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. George.
Here.
Dr. Blockwood.
Here.
I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence in memory of Margaret Kraft. Margaret Kraft was the secretary, was the secretary of the district from 1972 to 1999. And her last position before she retired was board secretary for many, many years. She passed away last Friday, October 13th, and so we would like to observe a moment of silence at this time. Thank you, Dr. Blockwood. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those?
I recommend that you move on Resolution Number 66, improving through Disciplined Case 01 of 2017 to 2018.
Seven.
Second.
Removed in second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those? My thing I have on my legislative report is it looks like there won't be a resolution until probably January, so... Is there anything I can tell you, Ted, if I'm not mistaken?
Are you thinking about the favor we have on the end of that?
Should we part of the next slide?
Education and planning, Mrs. May.
Thank you. Building principals are with us this evening. They're going to have a presentation on the state assessment data from 2016-2017.
Thank you, Mrs. May. As everybody is aware, every year we do do a presentation pertaining to our PSSA data. This year, unfortunately, we have not received our PBOSS data yet, and our PBOSS data is the growth data. And we really look at the growth data because it tells us if students have gained the growth that they need to within a year's time period. Unfortunately, that was to be out September 20th, and then postponed again from PDE to October. We still did not have it, but we thought it was very important to still share the achievement data, which is the PSSA data, as well as the Keystone Exam data. So we're going to begin with Mrs. Stewart from Bagley Elementary School, who will begin the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as I move forward with Bagley information, our data, I'm going to spend a little time actually explaining what the charts are that you're going to see, because they are common throughout the presentation. That way, everyone will know ahead of time what you were looking at as we move forward. The first chart that we are looking at represents the percentage of students proficient in advanced in grades three through six in Math, ELA, and Science in fourth grade over a three-year period. This includes all the students that took the test those years. And I say all students, because this could include students who were new to the building or to the district in 2016, took that assessment, but were not here in 2015 or 2014 for those assessments. We look at this data, and we believe that it reflects more of our curriculum and instruction than the student growth. Over the three-year period that's represented on the slide, we have spent time providing professional development to our staff focusing on skills related to the PSSA. Text-dependent analysis questions, close reading, inquiry learning, multisensory math. We have done decks of knowledge, talked about rigor, questioning and discussion strategies, things like that. That is part of now the daily instruction. Looking at Bagley, you can see that we do have a gradual improvement in third grade in both ELA and Math. And in fifth grade, you will see that we fluctuate a little bit, but we did show improvement in Math from 2015, 16, to 2016, 17. Moving forward with the presentation, we broke our data down, and now we're looking at cohorts. And when I say cohorts, what we have done now is now we're comparing apples to apples. We have removed the students who have moved in and out of the district. So when you're looking at the cohorts of students, these are students who took the assessment all three years. So if you took it in 2016, 17, you were with us, and you took it in 2014, 15. So we will look at this diagonally by color. These are the same cohorts of students. This demonstrates more the effects of our supports and our systems that we have in place within the elementary buildings here at Greater Latrobe. So when you look at specific cohorts, for example, the color, I apologize. The color is much darker on this screen, so it is harder to see. But if you look at the pink, those are our sixth-grade students last year. And that is their progression from fourth grade to fifth grade and sixth grade. Yes, what you can see, and if you start in grade four Math in 14, 15, it was 67.1%. Moving on to 2015, 16 in Math, it was 65.8, so it did go down, it did fluctuate. But then it did go back up. Their final year increased six to 68.4%. ELA started out at 78.7%, and it did increase to an 80%, and then did stay stagnant. Looking at my fourth-grade students, my jump from third grade to fourth grade in ELA, that's the green, went from a 75.4%. Those students in fourth grade jumped to an 81.2%. My teachers in fourth grade did a lot with the close reading and the text-dependent analysis questioning with the students. We did not see the growth in Math, but you will see that that is common throughout the district in our Math scores, as well as the county and the state. The Math scores were lower this year than we have seen in the past. Digging even deeper, we did pull out then the subcategory of historically underperforming. Historically underperforming is a line item on your SPP scorecard, I call it, when we do that. And historically underperforming students are students who are special education, economically disadvantaged, or English-language learners. And when you're looking at the ESS's data, you will not see English-language learners included in that. You don't have it. But down the right-hand column, you will see our historically underperforming. Those are the students who were proficient advanced in that category compared to all of the students last year. And I will say, when you look at our data, and you know the systems that the elementary has in place with RTII and our flexible grouping and all of our interventions, and knowing the students who are in the historically underperforming categories are system supporting, they are much closer to all of the students in percentage than our Math students. With that being said, some of the strengths at Bagley Elementary School. I ran a report looking at my historically underperforming cohort that was in sixth grade last year, and I followed them three years back, and we did see an improvement in ELA, an increase in proficiency. We moved 7.4% of our students to the advanced category in ELA from that cohort. And in that, we increased the percentage of advanced students by 14.3%. And we did have Math support last year in our sixth grade as well as this year. And I feel that that helps significantly, because we could do interventions in small groups with Math. Grade three ELA proficiency continues to increase over the three years. This was all students. I believe that my third grade is working at a level of rigor that is helping make the students more successful. Obviously, we're not there yet, but I think we're on a great track. And we didn't experience the fifth-grade dip in the Math cohort. We all hear about the fifth-grade dip all the time. I can't say that we went up, but we did remain stagnant, but we didn't dip. So I was pretty excited about that, because again, we put that in place with the Math support, which I believe is helpful. Areas of focus, as always, we are focusing on ensuring that all students make at least a year's growth in one school year. We will see how that turns out when our PBOSS data comes out. I'm anxiously waiting that, because that I'm excited to see. We are focusing on enriching all of our students, not just our gifted students, but including high achievers. We've done a lot of work with gifted education over the last school year. And we are working and focusing on increasing rigor, so hopefully we'll see some more of those scores increasing. Thank you. And we will move to Mrs. Pollard with Leitrop Elementary.
Good evening. I am here to represent Leitrop Elementary School. We have the same charts that Bagley showed, so this chart that you are looking at currently represents, again, all of the students that were assessed on the PSSA. Just to highlight some of the components, if you want to take a look at grade three. Last year, we departmentalized our grade three as a pilot program, which means that the teachers are specializing in either teaching ELA or Math. Previously, they taught both ELA and Math, and we wanted to see what would happen if they just focused on one of those tested subjects. As you can see, the Math scores jumped a little bit, not to the area, obviously, that we would want them, but you will see that as a consistency with our scores in Math. ELA has been a large focus of ours for many years now. Like Mrs. Stewart said, we have implemented numerous strategies and different types of programs, and you see that big jump in ELA to 82% proficiency. So we were excited about that. Another strength is our fourth-grade ELA. They stayed pretty steady in that. They started at the low 70s and then moved to the mid 70s. For the remaining, again, a focus of ours will be Math. Our scores are lower. We are recognizing that. And we'll talk a little bit about what we're going to do about that going forward. This next chart, again, I have the lovely purple that you can't see. But this represents our cohorts of students. Again, we are looking at the same students throughout. So when you take a look at the gold color, we have Math. These students started at 63% proficiency. We are noticing, again, that dip in fourth and fifth grade, so we are losing students in the proficiency level. For ELA, we're going from the 68%, jumping up, and then we did lose some here. But we did have a nice jump from the third grade to the fourth grade. Our fifth grade, or I'm sorry, the pink numbers right here, that is 61% to 62%. And then we saw that dip in sixth-grade Math to 56%, and ELA is 75 to 80 to 75. So we are seeing a little bit of an increase from that fourth to fifth. The blue color is fifth grade, and again, it's the same cohort. We saw that drop in Math from 64 to 59, and for ELA, we did see a nice increase from 71 to 77. For Math for third grade, this was 15, 16, from 66%, and again, that dip to 55, and then 72.5 with a nice increase to 77. The next chart shows our historically underperforming. Like Bagley, LES's historically underperforming includes special education and economically disadvantaged. It gives you the comparison on where the entire class scored versus where that subgroup scored. One thing to note, in our grade three, 61% of that class made up in historically underperforming. In fourth grade, it was 49. In fifth grade, it was 60%, and in sixth grade, it was 52%. So on average, we have a half to over a half of our students that make up this category. Strengths, again, I will highlight our grade three ELA, PSSA scores. We have shown growth. We continue to look at what we're doing to build on that. We have increased the number of advanced students in ELA from third to fourth. We went from 17.6% to 36.3%. And when we look at the third-grade ELA, 78% of our students that were in the economically disadvantaged were proficient. As we go forward, we obviously know that we have some work to do in Math. Our Math, Go Math has been updated, and it's much more rigorous this year than it has been. We are also using a program called Math Solutions that they are coming in to provide professional development. There will be some coaching and modeling with that. So we are really hoping by putting those components together, we will start to see the scores increase. Our focus also is on gifted and high-achieving students. This has been an endeavor, I think, that you've heard from Dr. Soltes. We are super excited about it, just to make sure that those high-level kids are growing that year to year. We want to make sure that they are meeting all of their needs. And again, the student growth, we want everybody to show a year and a year's gain. That's all for me, and Mrs. Palace from Mountain View Elementary School is next.
Again, Mountain View's charts look very similar to Bagley and LES's, so I'm not going to go into as much detail about exactly what it means, because I think this is the third time. You probably know what you're looking at. So right now, you're looking at just the proficiency chart. So this is proficient and advanced students, the percentage in the 2014-15, the 15-16, and then the 16-17 school year. Again, this is all of our students taking the PSSA. This isn't just a cohort of students. This is all of the students that were taking the PSSA in that school year. When we go in and look at the cohorts, we were looking just at the students that took all of those assessments here at Greater Latrobe. So when you're looking at the green here, their third-grade assessment into their fourth-grade assessment, it was 92 students at Mountain View that took both of those assessments. And you can see their Math score when they were in third grade, they were at 76% proficient in advanced. And then in fourth grade, they went to 61%. And then for ELA, they were at 83.7, and then in fourth grade, they were at 82%. The yellow is looking at 78 students. So these students we had in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And you can see from third to fourth grade, there was a little bit of a drop, and then there was some bringing it back up then in fifth grade, which I know Mrs. Stewart mentioned that fifth-grade drop, that we many times see from the fourth-grade year to the fifth-grade year. And so they went up, which is a great thing. And then if you're looking at the pink on our paper, but it's looking purple up there. In fourth grade, this is a cohort of 88 students. In fourth grade, on their 14, 15 assessment, they were 59%. They stayed stagnant at 59% when they went into fifth-grade Math. And then in sixth-grade Math, they were 56% proficient or advanced. That same pink or purple group for ELA, the 88 students were at 77% in fourth grade. They moved up to 83% proficient and advanced in fifth grade, and then dropped down to 76% when they were in sixth grade. And then finally, the blue that you can see up there, we were looking at 86 students. And this group of students in fifth grade, they were at 67%, and they moved up to 74%. And in ELA, they were at 78%, and moved up to almost 90% proficient. Here, we're looking at the historically underperforming subgroup. So we have how we did overall proficient and advanced at Mountain View as compared to the historically underperforming subgroup. Similar to Bagley and LES, this includes our special education subgroup as well as our economically disadvantaged subgroup. But it also includes our L students at Mountain View. We do have students that English, they're English-language learners. So the L students are also included in our historically underperforming subgroup at Mountain View. This subgroup is about between 20 to 30 students when we're looking at the full group of historically underperforming students. So you can see here their scores as compared to the overall population at Mountain View. You can see that they are lower, and this is something that we continue to work on at Mountain View to ensure that they too are making the growth that we need to see with all students. Our strengths at Mountain View, we are improving the proficiency, fourth and fifth grade in Math. Fourth and fifth grade for Math, and third and fourth grade in English-language arts. We were super impressed with our number of advanced students this school year, this past school year, looking at their scores this year. The advanced students in Science, 58.2% of our students, so over half of our fourth graders were advanced on their Science PSSAs. And for ELA, we were at 45% in fourth grade, and 36% in sixth grade advanced students on the PSSAs. Areas of focus, our students with reading disabilities. We have started the enhanced reading support classroom at Mountain View Elementary that supports students within the school district that have reading disabilities. And this is something that we see that we need to continue to work on with these students, both for their ELA assessment, but also for their Math assessments. Our gifted students and our high achievers, as you have heard at Bagley and LES, it's very similar at Mountain View. We need to continue to make sure that all students are learning something new every day when they are at school. Our Math instruction and our Math supports. Mrs. Pollard spoke about Math Solutions, and that's something we are doing district-wide. And then finally, the closing, the Achievement App, which that's the historically underperforming student subgroup that we were talking about, that just, their percentage rate is not similar to our full population. So we need to see what else we need to do to help with that group. Now I'm going to go into information or data that's for all three elementary buildings. This is our county rankings. So if you take each grade level and this subject that they are tested in, we have it ranked as far as how each building did as compared to the other elementary schools within our county. So if you're looking at grade three, you can look right across. So Bagley was 17 out of 44, LES was 24 out of 44, and Mountain View was 23 out of 44. So it goes similar to that going down. So grade three ELA, Bagley came in number 12, LES came in number 15, Mountain View came in 10. And so you can look right down through there to see how we did as compared to the other elementary buildings within our county. I think it's important to note, when you get down into fifth and sixth grade, you can see the total number of elementary schools in our county. It does go down from 44 to the 37, then down to 27, just because fifth grade and sixth grade sometimes show up in middle schools in other school districts. So therefore, the number, or the total number of elementary schools does change as it goes down through that chart. And then next here, we have how we did compared to the state. So what we did here was we took all of our assessments for across all elementary buildings. So our proficiency rates, or our advanced and proficient students for each grade level for Math and ELA, and then also Science in fourth grade, how we did as a district for that grade level as compared to the state average. As you can see, as you're looking down through, we were above the state average in all areas. However, we do know that there are still areas that we need to grow in. We want to be way above the state average. So this is something that we do like to look at, just to make sure we are above that state average. But we like to be even higher above that state average. So this is for all the GLSD elementary schools together. At this time, it's time for Mr. Schibbiss to talk about the junior high data.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
When did you start the Go Math program for this?
This current school year, this is our sixth year using Go Math.
And it would be interesting, what did we use before that? What was the system for that?
It was standard-based. The teachers used whatever.
We didn't have a program before.
One thing, yeah, one thing to note is, or the assessments, PSSA assessments have changed drastically as far as the rigor level.
If you look, just to take note of it, if you look at the state average on the Math assessment as compared to the ELA assessment, I think it's important to note, we see the drop in the Math proficiency rate, but the state also does. So if you look at, for example, in third grade, 54%, as compared to an ELA, it's 64%. So as a state, our average is lower in the Math compared to the ELA as well.
What would help is in that number, though?
Absolutely, it is.
Is that fifth-grade dip consistent with the increase in the rigor of the content for the students at that point? Do we suddenly are based on the percentages, the division, and I don't know? I mean, is it so much more, or is that?
What I will tell you is, there is definitely an increase. But I will tell you, there are many schools that do not have the fifth-grade dip. But we continue to have that fifth-grade dip, or we continue to watch for the fifth-grade dip and celebrate when we stay stagnant, right? So is there an increase? Yes, there is. However, it's not something that we can't surpass.
So the PSSA is a criteria reference test, meaning they take the standards, and then they try to build a test that addresses those standards. It's not something that's norm-based, that you're going to get a percentile rank for.
Mrs. Coles, I'd also say candidly, the fact that our fifth grade is going in elementary school and not in a middle school type setting as well.
And what is the impact of that?
I just think, I think that there's a different mindset when you go from elementary school to middle school.
So they're being all of an elementary school and demanding more in a middle school?
Well, I think that you need to demand more out of your fifth graders in an elementary school, because there's a natural demand that occurs when students go to a middle school type setting. So when Becky talks about sometimes in fifth grades in other schools, you see the dip, and sometimes you don't. I think it's interesting to see if those dips occur in a middle school. I prefer what we have, don't get me wrong, okay? I'm not selling a middle school concept at all. I'm just saying that we need to be mindful of the rigor that goes on in fifth grade. And even though we're in an elementary setting, rigor needs to be there. It is, it is.
What are we doing in science that's so good?
What are we doing in science that sounds good?
Our scores historically have been good in science. I will tell you that we expect our scores to be in the 90% ranges. It too became a very rigorous test. A lot is on problem-solving, inquiry-based, and we are moving to that.
This test assesses just as much reading as it does.
I was going to say, yes, you have to be cognizant of the science test. It is a reading, and there's also Math in that science test, so it does.
Is it, do you think that it's the staff? I mean, you wouldn't expect the jump, given that Math and reading are in science. You wouldn't expect it to be so much better.
And it always has been done. Yes, teachers have taught the science curriculum for many years.
And I think the students love it.
Yeah.
It's very engaging, so.
Yes, it's considered to be fun.
Whereas math and reading are work.
They're fun too.
But our big focus in elementary is on the math this year. We've done so much with language arts over the last four years. And it's now time to really put that focus on our math instruction.
Any other questions for elementary? All right, then, Mr. Schibis, you're up.
I'm pretty full. Okay, so, uh, I am here to represent grades seven and eight tonight, so our portion, I think, as I take seventh grade and eighth grade, and then Mr. Kralik, obviously, nine and ten, Mr. Maines, eleven and twelve, so it'll be a little bit shorter each of our rolls. Um, but if you look up here at the slide, uh, again, we did ours similar, but a little bit different. I added the state average to the first slide. There's been a, a lot of things over the years about, uh, seventh and eighth grade, and, uh, if you look at those state averages, um, and then our averages, if you look at the column here, in two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, is our proficiency data, obviously, in comparison to that. And so, you know, right away, uh, we look at fifty percent in seventh grade math, um, and it's significantly lower than some of the percentages you've seen in the presentation, uh, so far. But that's been, that was a win for us, if you look at this three-year rolling average. Not saying that that's where we want to be, uh, but we have made substantial gains, uh, in math. We have, uh, just started last year, was our first year in seventh and eighth grade, uh, implementing Go Math, lining up with the elementary school, uh, the students being used to that program, uh, moving through. And so we've made incremental steps. You can see the state averages, and I believe the county averages, which I'll show you in a few slides. Uh, the top of the county in math, um, in seventh grade math was in the high fifties. Um, in eighth grade math, I believe it was in the mid-fifties, um, and we were sort of, um, I would say we were in the top tier of that. I would say near the top, but we weren't, we were certainly above middle and moving in. Justice Elementary, uh, illustrated to you, we can see some cohort data, and I illustrated the math too as well. Um, and we're also looking at language arts, a couple of things that we've seen fall, and the state averages fell as well in those areas, uh, were ELA in grade seven, and ELA in grade eight, and also science in grade eight. So we have some areas that we need to, uh, obviously, look at more closely. If I go to the next slide, you can see our historically underperforming data. Again, I have our proficiency data, um, the same as the slide before. Historically underperforming again is our special education students as well as economically disadvantaged students. Um, this was sort of a, a few of these numbers, believe it or not, this accounts for about a hundred students in each grade. Um, would account for those, that column over there. So when you're looking at fifty-four percent, that's fifty-four percent out of approximately a hundred students that fall into that historically underperforming category. In those categories, especially ELA in seventh grade, um, talking about fifty-four percent, that was up, um, significantly from the years before. Fifty-four percent of those students, uh, were moved from a low basic, basic to a proficient mark, um, in ELA. So that was definitely something, uh, that we were looking at as a plus. Here's that slide I was talking to you about, about county ranking. So middle schools in the county are out of twenty-three. So again, the same things I had in these two columns, this is our proficiency data, the state average, and here is our rank out of twenty-three in the county. So, um, you kind of get a little bit of a feel for our percentages and where we lie, uh, with those. Looking at Keystone, we obviously have a number of students in eighth grade, um, who take the Keystone exam in algebra. Uh, so that's obviously a, a high school exam to pass the algebra course. And a hundred and seventy-eight students took that test last year in the eighth grade. Ninety-one percent of those students passed that upper math exam test. Two students, uh, tested into that exam in seventh grade, and both of those students passed that exam. Um, so they can check off that requirement already, uh, at a junior high level for the Keystone exam, so very proud of that. And so again, our, our strengths and areas of focus, strengths, math scores continue to climb. I, I know those, uh, numbers are certainly different, uh, than the numbers you're seeing from elementary or you're even going to see from high school, but they continue to go up incrementally as we, as we implement Go Math and restructure the courses. Um, last year was the first year that we had all students taking one math class in seventh grade. Um, then in eighth grade, starting to attract students. Uh, this year will be the first year for that, taking year math B, more academic, Algebra One with a lab. Um, so as we continue this new structure, this new curriculum, we're engaging, uh, how that works. We do, uh, find another strength, the decrease in the number of below basic for grade seven ELA. So, um, we didn't necessarily move, um, as much as I would like, uh, students up into the proficiency level. But if you see a breakdown of our below basic students and moving them up to basic, or basic students moving into proficient, um, we made a lot of strides in that area. So our areas of focus, we've already, we've got this year, we have an in-service day coming up November ninth. We've already designated part of that day, um, to focus on data, and we already have a plan. We're meeting with each one of our, uh, data teams, Math Seventeen, Math Eighteen. They've already identified, uh, what students from this particular cohort are bringing to the table. It's okay to look at this data, um, but in a sense, it's, it's an autopsy from last year. Uh, we want to look at what the cohorts bring into us, also what we struggled with last year, so to see if we can see any trends in the data. Um, our language arts, uh, department already found some issues with the, um, open-ended responses to TEAs, um, and trying to align, uh, with what the state wants. The state's looking a lot with writing segments now for a lot more technical reading. We're teaching a lot more analysis and opinionated writing, um, persuasive writing. They want, they want the methodicals, uh, they want them to look into the reading, they want them to almost recollect to take, uh, what is read and the facts. Um, it's a different style, it's a different style of writing to teach to that, um, particular test. We want to continue to grow our advanced and proficient categories. And lastly, I said improved school culture for testing. Uh, something, something, uh, new to the junior high that, you know, I noticed last year, my first year. I think students, uh, you know, it's a lot. We talk about web crew, we talk about lead crew, we talk about making transitions. It's, it's testing, um, something they're taking seriously. Um, and that's, that falls on me, that falls on, uh, our staff who are certainly stepping up to that task. But if that's the offer incentives, that's to do a little bit more to kind of pump them up for that. Um, or if that's just more character building, um, for them, they're, they're possibly a little bit burnt out. Um, this isn't something Keystone, they see a little bit of, um, obviously incentive there, pass that test for a graduation requirement. And we need to do a better job, I think, of, uh, making sure we promote that test, talking about the performance, uh, the importance of it, um, for students as they schedule classes for the high school for the following years. Okay, any questions for me, Mr. Kralik? That's great, it's nine and ten.
Thank you, Mr. Schibis. If you all care, Mr. Maines, when I talk about the PSSA exam, uh, in the high school, we're all about the Keystone exam. The Keystone exam, students are required to take three state tests, and that is in the content areas of algebra, biology, and language arts. So our ninth graders, we, it's a great time for we send to classes, so our ninth graders, the current classes of two thousand twenty-one, being our freshman, approximately a hundred and eighty-three students took the algebra, completed the Algebra One course, which means they take the algebra exam. Um, of the one hundred and eighty-three students, a little over half, eighty-nine point six percent proficiency, uh, for those students. Those are current ninth graders, uh, which means we still have a chunk of ninth graders to test when they complete Algebra One in our ninth grade year. So when we look beyond to the class of two thousand twenty, currently, they now have two Keystone exams under their belt, being the two hundred and ninety-nine students that we made up for, which is hitting a decline in our overall percentage of fifty-nine point five percent. And every ninth grade student takes biology, uh, with a lab, okay? They take a lab sample in the ninth grade, and three hundred and nine students, uh, tested seventy-seven percent, uh, being proficient on the Keystone exam. That's an outstanding number, uh, for our biology, uh, students. We used to, this is our second year testing all of our students in bio. Uh, previously, we only tested approximately half of our students in bio. Um, students in natural biology until, half of them not taking to their tenth grade year. But now we have all of our students taking bio, and seventy-seven percent are proficient. Um, that's a pretty strong number that we have there, developing students. So, uh, the class of two thousand twenty, um, primarily have those two Keystone under their belt, and then we go to our sophomore class, which is a class of two thousand nineteen. Uh, so the class of two thousand nineteen, these are our current juniors. Uh, so if you look at their, uh, proficiency levels, and remember, when a student takes a Keystone exam, it's banked until their junior year. That's one thing that's important to remember. Their PBOs or growth data, that gets factored into that individual building's SDP, but the achievement data, that, that is banked to their, uh, junior year. So you can just run through the data there. Uh, the elementary principals talked about what the historically underperforming represents, that is the same data. Then for our current class, our current senior class, which this data is made not by our SDP scores. Algebra were at seventy-six point three, bio seventy-four point six, uh, eighty-three point five. And that bio number, remember, Mr. Kralik just said, these, these current seniors did not all take bio in ninth grade. So you can see what a difference that makes when you look at the junior class at eighty-five point two. That was the first group, first group of students taking, uh, everybody taking bio in ninth grade. You can see what a difference that is, uh, that is making for us, and that's a big, definitely a big increase. Uh, when you factor in, and you split it, the, the current senior data, um, and compare it to everybody in the county, out of seventeen high schools, uh, you can see right where we fall. Uh, top five for algebra and bio, and we're, we're seven with language arts. Uh, the area of focus, uh, for the high school ninth grade for algebra, and biology in tenth grade for language arts, what, what we noticed, if a student doesn't pass that test the first time that they take it, our percentage of getting them to pass the second and the third times aren't very good. So our, all of our focus is going to those students in ninth and tenth grade for the, for when they take it that very first time, to get them to pass. So we're dumping all of our resources, our, our teaching assistants, uh, everything we have into those, into that first time that they're taking. That's not to say we're not, we're not going to retest, um, but like I said, our, 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 uh, achievement of retesters, uh, data is not, not outstanding, so we're really dumping and focusing everything in that ninth and tenth grade year. Um, learning for mastery, so learning for a grade, we're really focusing at the high school on feedback. Uh, we want, we want kids wanting to learn a material, instead of learning the material, they get the grade. So focusing, focusing on feedback, we're delaying the grade when I invite them to grade, or this is something new we're rolling out to the staff. Uh, they're going through, instead of putting a grade on their test, they're just highlighting mistakes. Then, then the next day, they'll put the grade in the grade book. So when, when the kids get their test back, there's a, a group discussion, a class discussion on what, what those students missed. Uh, then the next day, they get to see the grades. So focus, that, that first day is on the learning taking place instead of the grading. Uh, our goal is to empower students, because let's face it, if we don't empower students, they're always going to be dependent on us for learning. That's something that once they leave high school, um, that's not going to serve them very well once they get to college. So our goal to empower, we have several teachers, uh, working with flexible seating, Jess Calagreeno, Carol Leffler, Rebecca Snyder. Uh, some of you have been enduring open house, or in the building they have. If you get to see their classes, it's really neat, because students get to pick, or they sit to learn, learn their materials on the couch. A lot of comfortable seats, mini bags, nice lighting in the rooms, uh, so a lot of good things happening. Um, Ms. Fedor in her, uh, Algebra One B class, she got her data back this past summer. Wasn't happy with where she was with the data. She came and went to chat with, uh, Sidney Pomphillia and myself. Uh, and we worked with her, and she's now taking a more personalized approach to Algebra One B in ninth grade, where her students are going to choose how they learn the material, and it's more of a self-paced class. Uh, that's working out very well, and the other two, uh, algebra teachers in ninth grade are kind of looking at what she's doing to see if she's going to have success with it, which I think she's going to. Uh, and then hopefully, we could model that, um, similar, uh, program for the other two teachers. Culture relationships. Let's face it, kids don't learn from teachers they don't like. I stole, I stole that quote from Peter Pearson. Uh, so our main focus this year is building relationships with students, that started with Judy and Georgia's presentation, uh, back, uh, on the first in-service day. So we're really working on staff to build relationships and create that culture where students want to be rushing into our building instead of not wanting to come into the building. And that goes back to really focusing on students taking that test the first time, because I will tell you, um, we weren't pulling students out of their classes to remediate. Um, and once you're pulling a student out of the study hall, or pulling them out of their class of tech, you're turning them off the school at that point, and we do not want to do that to our kids. Uh, so now we're focusing on having a teaching assistant push into those, uh, English and math and bio classes, uh, to work with those teachers right in the classes that are pulling those kids out of the, uh, out of their, what they enjoy doing. Uh, improve critical thinking, uh, and problem solving skills across all content areas, and that deals with project-based learning, uh, tied with our career pathways. As part of the differentiated supervision for teachers, we're working, uh, with various part employers to develop authentic, challenging projects and engage students that think critically and apply academic, technical, and workplace know-how to solve real-world problems. These are skills that when they graduate from college in the early twenty-twenty's or mid-twenty-twenty's, employers are looking for critical thinking, problem-solving, creativity, and collaboration skills. And I will tell you that a lot of those skills are not measured on the Keystone exam. So we want those students to be successful. So I will tell you, we feel the Keystone exam is important, I'm not sitting here saying it's not, uh, but we feel those other skills are, are more important than that, than that standardized test. So we're preparing our kids for, uh, life after high school. And that is it. Any questions for junior high, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth?
I've got a question for the junior high. The elementary is talking about a year's improvement in a year of school. How are you dealing with that concept after elementary? I mean, are the, are the courses, like, well, math, are the courses similar enough? Going from, I don't know, what to what? But are they similar enough that you can actually measure that whether you're getting a year's learning in a year of school or a PBOs? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I mean, I, I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, you're, you're kind of talking, we're in secondary brick, and for instance, we have world cultures kind of tested areas, and we have civics in eighth grade. Uh, and so a rematch in test for test. Um, I, I think that's interesting. I think in, in language arts, I can speak to that. Um, we're doing a lot with, um, text-dependent analysis, doing a lot with, um, some higher-level reading skills. Um, and I'm not, I'm not as familiar with the elementary school, but there's a significant difference, I can tell you, with the language arts test between seventh and eighth grade. Uh, one's, one's much more writing-intensive, um, in the eighth grade, much, much more, uh, the literature works that we're seeing from seventh to eighth grade have been, um, a huge jump for our students. Uh, looking at some very verbose language, looking at a lot of, um, looking at context clues and skills of words that they've never seen before, and being able to, and, and that's the point, being able to pick out certain languages and changes. Um, so, if I say they're completely different, um, you know, apples oranges, I don't think so. I mean, I think that there's, there's definitely a fluidity there. Um, I just think we're seeing a heck of a change in the test as far as, um, I'm not saying that the elementary doesn't have a, a difficult test, but I'm talking about some serious critical thinking skills. And in the open-ended response questions, a number of those, uh, we talked, it's increased in the number of open-ended response questions in math this year, um, as opposed to multiple choice questions in reading this year, so, um, I'm not sure if I answered that or not.
Maybe I asked it wrong. I think, I, I'd like to know what the principals think of whether that concept of getting a year's improvement in a year of school, if the basis for that is being laid in elementary, and then whether that raises the kids to the level they need to go to the complete change in curriculum and the way students move in the school, et cetera, at the secondary level. Have you gotten them to the level that they need to be?
I'd like to say yes. I mean, I, I came from a high school for the past five years before I was here. And you see it, you see some of the numbers, uh, we're getting students to pass those Keystone exams as they go through. So I think if the two tests are apples oranges in that sense, if we're, if we're talking, um, maybe our numbers look a little bit lower, but is there moving up from seventh to eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, are they passing those tests? And are we right out there in the county? And I know we're not just ranking ourselves in the county, we're, we're, we're self-explaining on us, but, um, I certainly do, I certainly see a change. Uh, if you're asking my opinion, uh, on it, I just think it's a tough test to gauge their numbers to our numbers, um, to see, to follow a cohort. We're, we're looking with our teams of teachers and trying to follow the cohort from fourth, fifth, sixth, uh, seventh grade, and it's all over the place as far as, um, each year, what they're struggling, their standards they're struggling on are jumping all over the place. Uh, so we're really trying to break the data down, we're having trouble seeing a trend in that.
So we're really trying to break the data down. We're having trouble seeing a trend in that.
We have what's called P-Boss in Pennsylvania. And it gives us how that cohort should score down the next, and it takes into account all of their data. You know, it takes, and so at that point, you can see, are they making that year's growth in a year's time? And it will tell us if they are or they aren't because the formula is written in a way that it can tell us that. So that's why when we talk about, we're looking at achievement data, are they proficient? Is very different than are they making a year's growth in a year's time? Because you can have a child that's proficient or advanced, so they're showing up as great on the information we're looking at this evening, but maybe they're not making a year's growth in a year's time. And that's how we've been talking about our gifted students and our advanced learners. You know, they do well, they're advanced, it's awesome, we celebrate it. But in the same respect, you look at that cohort, and they're not making a year's growth in a year's time. And Dr. Solskjaer said earlier this school year, every child deserves to learn something new every school year. And when she said it, we're like, you're right, our gifted students sometimes come in, they don't learn anything new today. Well, then they're not making a year's growth in a year's time. And when we look at that cohort, they aren't always making a year's growth in a year's time. So tonight's data, they look great because they're advanced. But when we look at the growth data, not so much. Which is why it's very our focus for, especially in elementary, it's something we're working on with all of our teachers, is to make sure every child's making a year's growth in a year's time. Assure you, ultimately, they can use the P-Boss data as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
And hopefully, we will be getting the P-Boss data soon and being able to share that with you. I guess I can say on a positive note to thank the principals, Stanley's presentation. Next year, they have decreased the amount of testing by one section in EOA and one section in math. So they did listen to a lot of individuals who voiced their concern over the time of testing with that. So this upcoming year, we will have as many assessments in math and language arts. And you heard everybody talking about SVP, which is School Performance Profile, or the report card. And that's going to shift to something called the Dashboard, the Future Reading Index, which will take into account various components to score the report card for each school as well. So thank you for your attention. I know that was lengthy, but thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, I will move for adoption of resolution number sixty-seven to approve the GLSD comprehensive plan update. Second, if there's a second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move. And I move for adoption of resolution number sixty-eight to approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Access Building Services Agreement. Is there a move in second? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move. And I move for adoption of resolution number sixty-nine to approve the overnight and automatic state improvement for this school year. Is there a move in second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move. Okay, um, the next curriculum committee meeting will be on August eighteenth and nineteenth. Um, the year community association, private, the keynote. Thank you, Mrs. Solder.
Thank you.
I'll combine and move for adoption of resolution number seventy, the treasurer's report, and number seventy-one, approval of the payment bill.
Second. Is there a move in second? Any questions or comments on resolution number seventy and seventy-one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, any questions?
And again, I will combine resolution number seventy-two and number seventy-three. Seventy-two is to approve the electricity procurement agreement. Seventy-three is to approve the natural gas procurement agreement.
Is there a move in second? Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
Thank you. And the next committee meeting will happen on Wednesday, November first, at ten a.m. in the Edmond Building.
Thank you, Mrs. Solder. So these operations are planned, Mr. Uppman?
Thank you, Mr. Uppman. There's no report this evening. We only have a brief, our next meeting is Thursday, November ninth, at ten a.m. for the test.
Pause it. And for students' activities and recreation, I move for the adoption of resolution number seventy-four to approve the major support coaching salaries. So is there a move in second? Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move. And I'd like to point out that we will call Dan and Chair Senior Night on Friday, February twenty-seventh, at the Stadium at six fifteen. Community relations, Dr. George?
We do a session. We do our last parts of the rec. meeting. Next meeting is Thursday, October ninth, people, four thirty, municipal room, thirty.
Thank you, Dr. George. WIU, this is Nance.
Yes, the next faculty meeting will be on next Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, at seven p.m. in the WIU Board.
And Mrs. Nance, and DWC, do you see?
Yes, number four, however, next week, the DSC general committee, we're going to be on Wednesday, October nineteenth, at seven o'clock, back in the DSC.
Anything for policy, Mrs. Solder?
Thank you. Um, we worry speaking about board policy, I actually know all the board members that I think all of them have gotten. And remember, I've mailed their ballot for the PSBA representative to the P-verse board. And that is due, probably, at this time. Please throw it out and send it back because that's the PSBA's only voice on the P-verse board in this court.
I move for an option of resolution number seventy-five to approve on second reading the board policies, just to pull it up.
Second. Is there a move in second? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
Thank you. There will be a board policy meeting on Monday, I'm just remembering the day, right? Monday, November thirteenth, at one p.m. at the Edmond Building. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Solder.
Apology, Mr. Uppman?
Thank you, Dr. Uppman. I'm up to report this evening, and we don't have a new date set yet. Thank you, Dr. Uppman.
Mr. Uppman, the preparedness recommendation.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number seventy-six, which is the approval of the two presentations listed, Alexander Ritchie and Adam Simp.
Second. Is there a move in second? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
Can I ask the board to move on resolution number seventy-seven, which is the approval of the professional personnel substitute teachers that are vested?
Second. Is there a move in second? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
Can I ask the board to move on resolution number seventy-eight, which is the approval of support personnel classified appointments?
Seven.
Is there a move in second? Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
Can I ask the board to move on resolution number seventy-nine, which is the approval of a salary change for support personnel for Catherine Richards to the position of musical director, Junior High, was approved last month, and this is a correction for the years of her experience?
Second. Is there a move in second? Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
And last, I'd ask the board to move on resolution number eighty, which is the granting of tenure for Oliver Keaper, who is a world language German teacher at our senior high school.
Is there a move? Is there a move in second? Any questions or comments?
At the same point yesterday. Every year.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, that passes, you may move.
Under other business, we've mentioned the first two items for the last few meetings. The bandarama is tomorrow evening here in our senior high school auditorium. Our first practice of champions is this month, or this Thursday, actually, in this room, center for student creativity at seven thirty a.m. This Friday is our homecoming football game on Friday at the North Stadium, obviously. And then we have our homecoming dance, which I hear is approximately eight hundred students attending. Is that correct?
Anybody wants to help chap around?
Yeah, I know. The flea is out. But it will be Saturday evening here at the senior high school at seven p.m. So it's great that a lot of students are interested in attending. We have, please note, one board meeting in November, and it is Tuesday, November fourteenth, at seven thirty here in the CSE. And then our reorganization meeting for the new year will be on December fifth, Tuesday, at seven p.m. the reorganization meeting, and then seven thirty for the regular meeting, maybe in the hall. And then our regular meeting in December is December nineteenth, that Tuesday, at seven thirty. Now, it's hearing visitors part two, that's where anybody can speak on things on board off the agenda. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to set the button, say amen, your ass. And I move for the adoption of resolution, I would, for vermin.
Seven.
In the second, if there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.